Okay, you're all set.
All set.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll call this meeting of the Region 15 Board of Education for Monday, May 10th, 2021 to order. May we please sign, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America, republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
I need to get longer earbuds because I keep them falling out when I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I see we do not have our student reps here tonight. Unless I'm missing it.
I do have, they had some updates last minute, so I do have some student updates. While I won't look like a student, I'll do my best. Sorry, give me one second here while I have Zoe's update. I'm going to read you Zoe's update because she wrote it in nice paragraph form. I don't think I can on the fly pull everything out.
We could hear you better without your mask, Josh, too.
Yes, can you hear me now, Mr. Spirito?
No.
Okay, so this is Zoe speaking, so I'm channeling. The transition into the rest of the school year after spring break is going very smooth. All students are being flexible and thankful for the strategic ways the AP testing has been handled. All accommodations regarding the CDC guidelines are being done actively and appropriately during testing. In other news, students of all grade levels are very eager and excited to know that there will be a prom for both the seniors and the juniors. This is going to be the first school-oriented event that they've had all year. It's nice to end the crazy year on a good note, and it definitely gives hope to the younger grades who will soon be able to have their own prom and future events. Overall, these past few weeks since April break, things within Region 15 have been looking up, not only in regards to the events and testing, but also the abilities to get vaccinated. We are definitely grateful of how flexible everyone has been this year and the great work behind the scenes are keeping us hopeful for a great send-off. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Josh. Next, we have Student Recognition Superintendent Smith.
So for a digital meeting, I have lots of paper, so I apologize as I jump from paper to paper. So there are two sets of superintendent awards because Region 15 sits in two different counties. We spend time with both the Litchfield County Superintendent's Group and the Western Connecticut Superintendent's Group. It is tradition for each superintendent's group in the state to recognize students within their district that offer exemplary leadership skills. We have, I believe these are going to be. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. So we'll start with the Western Connecticut Group from Pompano High School. Jessica Rodriguez and Joseph Belabacqua have been recognized for Memorial Middle School, Kaima Kerthavassin and Lauren Anderson. I am sorry, I did practice that name earlier, but I got a little flustered now. And then for Rochambeau, Julia Gang and Avanish Talakumarian have been recognized. Those students will all have a plaque and certificate sent to them. And I do apologize to students this year that normally they would be invited to a reception at the Amber Room in Danbury and look forward to having those ceremonies once again in the future. From Litchfield, for the Litchfield County Group, we have Caitlin Lewis and Avak Hedge from PHS, Ava Felon and Alice Sugden from Memorial, and Charlotte Murphy and Brendan Fenn from Rochambeau. I thank all of our students for representing Region 15 and establishing their own leadership skills in all their endeavors. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to all those students. It's wonderful. Again, I do miss the time when they used to be here and we could shake their hands. But congratulations to all those recipients. It's a very high honor and we're very proud of all that you have done. So thank you. Next, we have the Global Citizenship Presentation with Dr. Carrie Chiappetta.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board and members of the community. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present an update on the equity and inclusion work here in Region 15. So for tonight's agenda, I'm going to share a brief history of the equity and inclusion work here in the region, talk a little bit about how and why it started, share some work that happened this year, particularly our teacher-in-residence position and some examples of her work, explain a little bit why our Global Citizenship and Character Advisory Committee is now called our Equity and Inclusion Council, talk a little bit about why this work is important, and say a thank you to our Equity and Inclusion Council members. There's really a lot to explain about this work and about what's happened over the past few years. So I've tried to condense this information into hopefully about 45 minutes to an hour presentation. We're very proud of the work that we've been doing this year in the region with the community support. And so I wanted to share with you a brief history of the work. And so as some of you may know, we talked about this in previous board presentations, but the Global Citizenship and Character Advisory Committee actually was established in the 2017-18 school year. And so while being accepting and inclusive of others has always been a school and region goal, supported by federal, state, and local policy and guidance statements, population changes, embracing 25th century learning expectations, and isolated events affecting individuals over the past few years led to the district elevating this work and making it a priority. And so we learned there was a need for education regarding bias and intolerance because of incidences that not only happened here in Region 15, but that happened across the state, the country, and the world. And so our committee originally started with 20 members back in 1718. And so one of the things was, we went back and looked at the Region 15 demographics. And the reason that October 2007 is shown here is because since our committee started in 2017, we went back 10 years. And so we looked at the demographics from 10 years from when we started our committee in 2007, and we updated each year. And so what you can see is the demographic changes here in the region. And so there's been an increase in our Asian population, a slight increase in our African or black, African-American or black population, an increase in our Hispanic Latinx population. And the reason native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander and two or more races are blank in 2007 was really because the state wasn't collecting data on those specific groups at that time, but they do now. So those show up. And what you'll notice is in 2017, about 6.82% of our population was not white. Now, the latest information that we have, 16.85% of our population is something other than white. But we don't only look at ethnicity and nationality, we also look at other groups. We look at students whose language, first language is not English, and you'll see that that has increased. We look at students who receive free and reduced lunch, and that has increased. And we look at the total number of students who qualify for special ed, and that has increased. And so our committee originally looked at four areas of focus, and we made sure that we want, or one thing that we wanted to do was to ensure that students felt welcome in our schools, felt safe in our schools, had the opportunities to participate in everything that we offer here in Region 15, and that they have the opportunities to learn. And with that, we developed a three-year plan with action, with goals and action steps. And so these three goals listed here were the original goals from the committee in 2017 and 2018. We wrote a three-year plan. And so that first goal was to nurture in students lifelong respect and compassion for themselves and other human beings, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, social class, disability, religion, appearance, or sexual orientation. And our second goal was that same goal, except in staff. And our third goal was to revise our curriculum to reflect a broad range of knowledge and information which illustrates varied and diverse contributions to history, the arts, science, mathematics, and literature. But one aspect that we noticed that was missing from our original three goals, and one thing that we kept saying was that we needed to have the community involved. And so here we noticed that we really didn't have a place in any of our three goals to involve the community. And so we felt that we needed to revise them. So these are some examples of the work that happened from 2017 to 2020. And for more details, you can go on the district website and look at prior Board of Education meetings, or look at the Region 15 Equity and Inclusion Council. And if anybody would like more information, I'd be happy to share with you at another time all of the work that's been done. But these are just some of the activities that happened in that three-year span. And so I wanted to share with you a timeline and come up to last spring. So I already mentioned that in 2017, 2018, there was the establishment of our Global Citizenship and Character Advisory Committee. In the fall of 2019, Superintendent Smith and I came up with the idea for a teacher-in-residence for cultural competency and diversity. We really needed someone whose full-time job was to focus on this work. As you know, last year was an unusual year for the budget approval process. So in April, late April, the budget was approved. The third week in May was when we actually started doing the interviews for the selection of the teacher-in-residence, and we selected someone. And a few days later, you'll notice that that was the death of George Floyd. After the death of George Floyd, the superintendent and I received many emails. So some of these emails were from people who already knew about the work we were doing here in the region and wanted the work to be faster and wanted more of the work to happen. But still, some of these other emails were from people who didn't know about the work that was occurring here in Region 15 over the past few years. And some of those actually were from Region 15 graduates. And so I wanted to share with you a letter that we received, probably about 20 of them from graduates from the 2016 class here at Pompano. And so it was the same letter, but it was really impactful. And so they introduced themselves, saying that they were from the class of 2016, and they said that they're extremely grateful for their education here in Region 15. But they felt that it failed to teach them and the rest of their community about racism, intersectionality, and privilege in the United States. And they said that they were writing to us to demand the implementation of programs that promote race awareness, learning, and anti-racism in our school district, and including adding diversity, compassion, and anti-racism to the core curriculum in the region, to increase diversity training for and diversity of teaching staff, administration, and disciplinary figures, and to hold students who say or do discriminatory or offensive things accountable for their actions. And they begged us to do our part in creating a better, educated, more compassionate community. And so in the midst of a global pandemic and in helping to write a plan to reopen schools, I offered to meet with each and every one of the people that emailed either Mr. Smith or myself to explain to them about the work that was happening in Region 15. The graduates came with a plan. They were well researched. They had a bunch of sources that they thought that we should look at. And I had time to explain to them the work that we'd been doing over the past few years, including the courses that we established at the high school over the past few years. We invited them to attend our meetings, and some of them actually did attend our meetings since they were on Zoom, and you can do it from anywhere. So I want to talk a little bit about this school year, so 2020, 2021. As I already mentioned, this was the first year of our Teacher-in-Residence for Cultural Competency and Diversity. And as you may know, the person that we selected is Dr. Erin Burden here with some of our students. She was a second-grade teacher here in the region at LMES and was also an original member of the Global Citizenship and Character Advisory Committee, and she's our teacher-in-residence. And so I wanted to share with you a little bit about what the job is for the teacher-in-residence. So her job is to assist teachers in grades pre-K through 12 in developing their cultural competence and also in developing and delivering lessons through this lens. She assists the curriculum committees in designing and developing curriculum so that it is inclusive and that it addresses diversity. She assists with the overall training of diversity initiatives and programs and develops strategies for improvement. She works in the planning for our Advisory Committee on Global Citizenship and Character and the strengthening of the bonds of our community meetings, the strengthening of the bonds we haven't been able to have this year because of the pandemic. She develops ways to foster community participation and support for our work, acts as a resource for classroom teachers in the implementation of cultural competence within the classroom, and she works with teachers either individually at each of the schools or by grade level, by department, or an entire group to provide practical supports, strategies, and instruction on inclusivity. And so I wanted to share with you her work at a glance. And so the classroom collaborations include co-planning and designing instruction. It could be co-teaching. It could be modeling. It could be visiting classrooms and/or helping teachers reflect. And she's done this with 66 different staff members in at least 108 classrooms. And this is multiple collaborations throughout the school year. We didn't count the ones where she just went in one time. And so we estimated if each of these classes has about 20 students in them, that she's reached approximately 2,160 students here in Region 15. She also has had professional development sessions with more than 300 staff. And so this, again, is more than one time. So we've included just the ones where she's met with teachers multiple times. And so this professional development has been with classified staff. It's been with secondary math teachers. It's been with secondary science teachers. It's been with elementary classroom teachers. It's been with the music department, and it's been with various community groups within the Equity and Inclusion Council. The total engagements to date is 657 total engagements, and that pretty much is looking at her calendar across the school year. And I want to put that into perspective, that this is the 153rd day of school, and she has had 657 total engagements. So some example of the work that she's been doing in her professional development that she's been providing. So the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion New Hire Series, so she's been working with all the teachers that we hired this school year, starting in August, and working throughout the school year with them on diversity, equity, and inclusion. She's worked, she has anti-bias and anti-racism five-part series with all paraprofessionals, secretaries, and general assistants on PD days that we have here in the district. She's worked with the music department, and we want to give a special thank you to Dr. Joe Abramow, who is a Region 15 parent and also a professor of music education at UConn and a member of the Equity and Inclusion Council. Representation Matters, the Inclusivity and Read Alouds and Mentor Texts, she's worked with the reading consultants who have also worked with elementary classroom teachers. And we've looked at the books that we use in our classrooms or that we ask students to read to make sure that they're culturally responsive and that in the session, teachers explored the representation in the text that we have in our curriculum. And she's offered a wide range of different PD opportunities on the MOU Wednesdays, which are voluntary if teachers want to attend, but she offers those just in case people want to. And lastly, she's worked with the PHS PE Department on gender inclusivity and what the recommended practices are. And so those are just some examples of the work that she's done. And so I wanted to share some collaborations that she's done with different teachers. And so here's a high school example. And so it's the 10th grade US History classes, along with the 4th grade Social Units Book Club that they're doing in English Language Arts. And for one of the assignments in Unit 6, four sections of US History have collaborated with our teacher-in-residence to design and implement a cooperative learning project with an authentic audience. And the authentic audience is our 4th grade students who are currently studying social issues in their book clubs and their reading units. And so over the past few weeks, the high school students have been involved in this project where they've been learning about the goals, individuals, and tactics used in the civil rights movements of the 50s and 60s here in the United States. And currently, they're working to apply what they've learned to create a book that will help educate the next generation about one individual from this movement. And so although most people think of the larger figures like Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. or Rosa Parks, there were countless other people whose stories aren't necessarily always told. And the high school student's task is to tell a story of one of these individuals and to work collaboratively in small groups to create a children's book that's aimed at an elementary school audience so that they can teach children about their selected figure. They'll ultimately present this to a group of elementary students from Region 15 on the live virtual Google Meet among classes. If we take a look at our middle school example, this is an example from our middle school Global Communications class. And so that Global Communications class is rooted in four areas, so global awareness, perspective, communication, and citizenship. And so the critical skills in this class are that students are able to investigate the world beyond their immediate environment, that they're able to recognize their own and other perspectives, that they communicate their ideas effectively to diverse audiences, and that they create an action plan to improve the world based on their understandings and their findings. And so an ongoing collaborative planning and instruction is taking place with the teachers of this course and with our teacher-in-residence. And the example that you see here on the screen is from one of the courses, is from the course, the Unit of Education. And students are introduced to the Declaration of Human Rights. And before examining the articles in student-friendly language, they're asked to consider whether they believe education is a human right, and the class holds space to dialogue. Students study Article 26, the Right to Education, as a springboard for exploring education around the world. Case studies are shown such as Malala are used in addition to films such as the PBS's Time for School and the award-winning documentary On the Way to School in order for students to study in context the experiences of young people in their quest for learning. In this course of the unit, students also select a specific place in which they are interested in exploring educational experiences of children around the world. They conduct research and apply communication skills in presenting their findings to their peers. And these are just three quotes from students who've been in this class. And so one of them says, "When I was younger, I never understood that every place is different and everyone's different. I mostly thought that kids can always have access to go to school and learn, but growing up, I realized I'm very fortunate to be able to do school every day and learn. I also would take things for granted, and now from experience, I've learned never to take things for granted. Be grateful, but you can't count on everything always being there." Another student said, "I value education, but I don't value it enough because there are some students in the world that don't have the opportunity to have great education. So I think I should be more grateful that I have access to education." And third, "I just wanted to let you know that I really enjoyed your class. I was talking to my mom about it, and it made me realize how much I want to be a public speaker and help people all around the world with global issues." And so the last is an elementary collaboration. And so the elementary collaboration is about mathematics. We chose mathematics because on more than one occasion, you probably hear people say, "Oh, I was never very good at math in school," or parents telling their students, "It's okay, I was never really good in math," which is very different than what you would hear about reading or literacy. You hardly ever hear anyone say or admit, "Oh, I was never good at reading," or "I'm not really literate." And so we thought it was important to focus here on the messages that students have and receive about mathematics. So I wanted to share with you, before I show you a video, a little bit about the background of this project. In the late 90s, there was a National Council of Teachers of Math article where a teacher explained how she asked her students to describe a mathematician or a scientist. And the students usually didn't describe themselves in the project. They usually described a white man in a lab coat working on math problems all day. And how she said it was really important for her students to learn that they too can be a mathematician. In the fall, speaking to Erin, our teacher-in-residence, and Annie Smith, who is one of our math coaches, we talked about this idea of students' views about mathematics and about mathematicians. And did students know that there's so much more to mathematics than just adding, subtracting, multiplying, and dividing? Annie and Erin developed this project with the help of classroom teachers and our Technology Integration Specialist. And so I asked them to create a video of this project, so I wanted to show that to you this evening. But before we do that, I pulled out one of the slides that's in the video, and that's here on the screen. And I think it's important for our students to know that no one is born knowing math, and no one's born lacking the ability to do math. And scientific evidence suggests that the difference between those who succeed and those who don't is not the brain that they're born with, but it's their approach to life, the message they receive about their potential, and the opportunities they have to learn. And so I'm hoping that this video works, so I want to show this to you.
So the question is, can we teach mathematics in a way that students can connect to themselves and to their communities and to their identity? Can we teach in a way that empowers students to challenge injustice? And most of all, can we teach in a way that honors students and their cultural and their intellectual greatness?
For the first time, I realized that I'm not just using math in math class. For the first time, I really realized that I'm not just using it at school.
The Mathematician Keith Devlin says, "There is scarcely any aspect of our lives that is not affected to a greater or lesser extent by mathematics. For abstract patterns are the very essence of thought, of communication, computation, of society, and of life itself."
Because not all mathematicians have to be white, and not all mathematicians have to be black. All mathematicians are girls and boys, and anyone could be a mathematician.
The Mathematician's Project is an instructional series focused on building positive math identities and expanding understanding of who mathematicians are and how they impact the world. Students begin by unearthing their initial conceptions of who a mathematician is. We launch the series with inquiry, posing the open-ended question, "Who is a mathematician?" and ask students to express their ideas via drawing. What are they doing? How do they spend their days? Why is their work useful? What do they look like?
Students engage in a gallery walk and follow up with small group discussion focused on patterns and unique ideas that they notice in one another's drawings. Students leave this session knowing that over the next four visits, we will deepen our thinking, ideas, and knowledge about who a mathematician is and how they experience and impact the world, both in thinking about ourselves as well as others. After exploring their initial conceptions of mathematicians, students build on the insights that emerged in their drawings to then consider how they see themselves in mathematics. Through engaging in math identity interviews with a partner, students dig into their attitudes, self-perceptions, preferences, and interests related to mathematics. Students then engage in a broader, whole-class discussion on their math autobiographies. We hope that this lesson helps students to make some of their current ideas about themselves in math visible, and that it serves as a springboard for inspiring students to foster an unlimited view of themselves and others in mathematics.
So to be a mathematician, you need the right mindset.
Well, I'm sure, what does it mean to be a good art class? Maybe you can help me think of an idea?
I think it means to like have good, to at least try your best.
Yes, I do consider myself a mathematician. So I just think that kind of like, that's kind of like with me. Like, when I do math problems, sometimes they're a little hard for me, but like, once I get past that hard, that like hard part, it just all flows, it just all like flows into me.
Students move from exploring math identity through math autobiography interviews to then selecting, researching, and celebrating the brilliance of historically excluded mathematicians, such as Black and/or African-American mathematicians, Hispanic and/or Latinx mathematicians, women mathematicians, and many more. The Mathematician's Project offers an opportunity to lift up the deep funds of mathematical knowledge within our own community. Through relationships with students and families, we can invite folks from our school communities who are willing to share how they apply mathematics in their lives.
You know, like, you know the importance of math, and it blooms almost like a flower, but it takes time. So right now, you don't really understand it. I didn't understand it, but as I practiced it through time, it became very beautiful and fun.
Leyla's grandmother and grandfather are both chemists. Her great-grandfather was an electrician. Her great-aunt is a mathematician. So math just is for us, it's just part of being a Brown. We love it.
The Mathematicians Project culminates with a collective sharing of new learning. After researching, students created a Flipgrid video. This way, there is a curated collection of classmates-conducted research on a range of mathematicians. Students take time to reflect on how their thinking shifted or evolved over the course of the series, and have an opportunity to revise their construct of who mathematicians are, what they do, and the nature and possibilities of their work.
Dr. Patricia Bath inspires me to help people and make the world a better place. And she's a mirror for me, because I want to be a doctor when I grew up too.
What if a mathematician? I just thought of a white man doing math equations. I never really thought that mathematician, that mathematicians could be anyone.
I used to think, I used to think.
I used to think.
I used to think.
I used to think mathematicians were just, just solve complex math problems.
But now, after this project.
But now, I'm thinking.
But now, I think.
But now, I'm thinking that all girls and boys, and same skin colors or different skin colors can be a mathematician, even you.
I thought math was just like subtraction and addition, but it turns out there's a whole lot of math out there.
So Annie showed this video to the consultant that we have working with her and Jay, who's our other math coach. The person who's working with them is actually the president of the Connecticut Council for Leaders of Mathematics here in the state. And he asked if he could actually show the council members this video because he thought it was so well-done. You heard one student in the video mention about mirrors and how the person he researched was the mirror for him. This year, we've been talking about mirrors and windows, and so I wanted to share a little bit with you about what that means. So a mirror is a story that reflects your own culture and helps you build your identity, while a window is a resource that offers you a view into someone else's experience. And it's been said that it's critical to understand that students cannot truly learn about themselves unless they learn about others as well. And so moving on, I wanted to talk a little bit to you about the reason we changed the Global Citizenship to become the Equity and Inclusion Council. And there's a few reasons for this. The first reason is because our theories of action. So the old name was based on our learner expectations that the region once had, and now with the incorporation of our theories of action, we wanted to make sure that the name of our group reflects inclusion since it's part of our theories of action. And so theories of action one and three really are the basis for our work. So the first one, we talk about all the time, if we foster schools that are welcoming and inclusive to all students, then students will feel valued and they will be better able to access their learning. But we also bring in theory of action three, which is if we embrace communication, transparency, and collaborative relationships within ourselves and the community, then we will improve trust and participation in supporting our students. So also during our first meeting this year with our Equity and Inclusion Council, we talked about the definition of diversity, equity, and inclusivity, and we use the definitions from the National Equity Project. And we went over these definitions to make sure that we all had a common definition. And so we said diversity includes race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, age, size, socioeconomic status, ability, language, et cetera. And equity is truly inviting all and ensuring that all are and feel welcomed, that they're able to participate fully in decision-making and development of the organization. And inclusivity is promoting just and fair inclusion and creating conditions in which everyone can participate, prosper, and thrive. We also shared the definition of cultural competence, and as our teacher in residence always said, this always comes with humility. So for the first part, we look at the attitudes towards different cultural differences. We gain knowledge of the different cultures and practices and worldviews. We develop cross-cultural skills and awareness of worldviews. And so that cultural competency really is the ability to understand and effectively be in a community with people across cultures. And while some say that we all should be culturally competent, now people are saying that we need to be culturally proficient. And so I wanted to share with you the updated goals for this year. And so we updated goals for a few reasons. First, the first set of goals expired. We said it was for three years, so 2017 to 2020. And so a lot of the action steps that were underneath each of those old goals were either being worked on or we achieved. And so as long as we're saying, you know, we've been saying that this work can't be done in isolation, that it can't only be Region 15 staff doing this work, that the community needed to be, needs to be involved. And as I stated earlier, we needed to make sure that we had a goal where the community could be involved. And third, we wanted to redo these goals to make sure that the committee had input into the goals and what they wanted to work on. And so our goals were for Region 15 students, Region 15 staff, and for members of the Middlebury and Southbury communities. And that those goals are to respect and have compassion for all aspects of diversity: race, ethnicity, gender, social class, ability, religion, appearance, and sexual orientation. And under each of these three goals has action steps. And along with those action steps are timelines for things that could happen this year, next year, or even the third year. And it also lists the people that would be involved. And the full, almost 20-page plan is on the Region 15 website under Equity and Inclusion, if anybody wanted to go look at the details that are in that. And so I wanted to share this slide with you because this is only some of the work that was done this year. And so if you look, some of the work happens in collaboration with members of a group that Sharon Wirt, who is a Southbury resident, started over the summer. And so together, we collaborated with Sharon and her group and explained the actions that we wanted to do, and we asked if she had any volunteers that would want to help with us. And so things like the STEM panel and the Tribery Reads are a collaboration between members of her group and members of Equity and Inclusion Council. So again, we did ally training at the middle schools this year. We piloted a high school mentoring program at one of our elementary schools. We have our monthly E&amp;I newsletters that come out. We have posters in the bathrooms at the middle school and high schools that were done in collaboration with SMART that helps students know where to go if they need help. We actually printed and have bound a book that a high school student created in one of the classes here at the high school, and we provided copies to the elementary schools. The committee has worked on, and they will work at the next meeting, on developing questions related to equity and inclusion for both administrator interviews and Region 15 staff interviews. And we actually have an Equity and Inclusion website that's coming soon. And here are two pictures on what that's going to look like. And there'll be a link on the Region 15 site to this, to this website. So why is this work important? So this work is not about pushing a liberal agenda. Some say that being inclusive and culturally competent is the moral and ethical thing to do, and I'm not here to tell you what's moral or ethical. What I am here to tell you and share with you is some reasons why being culturally competent is important. If we look at the first bullet, there's a safety and mental health reason to be culturally competent, because hurt kids hurt kids, and then they grow up to be adults. And so if we look at the article, "How Bullied Children Grow Up Into Wounded Adults," what it says is that depression, suicide attempts, physical health problems, reduced academic achievement are all the results of not being included and not feeling like you belong. And that goes for the children who are victims of bullies, and that goes for actually the bullies themselves. Another reason is that colleges and universities are looking for students and staff who are culturally competent. So college/university admission essays are asking students to write about diversity and inclusivity, and I'll give you a few examples. So Texas A&amp;M's question has a two-part prompt. It asks to describe the benefits of diversity and inclusion for you personally and for Texas A&amp;M campus. Students will have to focus on their personal experiences. What kind of diverse communities have they been a part of? How have those communities helped them? How did they personally grow from those experiences within those communities? And then they have to think about why it's important for a college community to be diverse and inclusive. Students need to think about themselves in an environment where they're with people from a wide range of backgrounds, experiences, and beliefs. In what ways will they make their college experience richer, both inside the classroom and outside the classroom? And students have to write this in about 250 to 300 words. And if they don't come from a diverse background, they can use this space to talk about why it's important for them to be part of a diverse culture on the campus and how it can help them grow. A side note, on the A&amp;M website, they actually define diversity as "Inclusion and Support of Individuals from All Groups, encompassing the various characteristics of people in our community. Diversity is the exploration of differences, identities, and ideas in a welcoming and nurturing academic environment. The educational benefits of diverse learning environments include civics learning, engagement, and preparation to live in a complex global setting." The essay question from Duke, so Duke University says that Duke is seeking a talented, engaged student body that embodies a wide range of human experiences. "We believe that that diversity of our students makes our community stronger. If you'd like to share a perspective you bring or experience you have had to help us understand you better, perhaps related to your community that you belong to, your sexual orientation or gender identity, or your family or cultural background, we encourage you to do so. Real people are reading your application, and we want to do our best to understand and appreciate the real people applying to Duke." The essay from Rice. So Rice says, "Rice is lauded for creating a collaborative atmosphere that enhances the quality of life for all members of our campus community. The residential college system is heavily influenced by the unique life experiences and cultural traditions each student brings. What personal perspectives would you contribute to life at Rice?" All of these schools are asking how students will contribute to their communities. So if we take a look at that second bullet, it says that colleges and universities are requiring training related to diversity for their leadership, for their faculty, for their staff, and their students. And some colleges and universities are actually requiring students to take certain classes. But why would colleges and universities just recruit diverse students and not have faculty that is culturally competent? And so that's where the training part comes in for staff in addition to students. So for example, Southern Methodist University in Dallas says that all graduating students have to take a human diversity co-curricular course. The University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign says courses for first-year students and transfer students have to work on skills to collaborate, earn, and work in a diverse environment. And the University of Mississippi actually has onboarding for new students and new employees, and actually have optional support programs. There are also economic reasons to be culturally competent, and companies are expecting cultural competency. This information shown on this slide comes from the McKinsey report titled "Diversity Wins: How Inclusion Matters." And I want to thank Gretchen Schmidt, who is on our Equity and Inclusion Council, who provided me with this report. The report looks over 1,000 companies in 15 countries in various industries. So consumer goods, energy, heavy industry, finance, healthcare, transportation, and tourism. This is the third report in their series. So they did one in 2014, 2017, and this one in 2019. And so they are looking, and companies are looking to ensure the representation of diverse talent. They're looking to strengthen their leadership and accountability for inclusion and diversity. They're looking, they're making sure to ensure equality of opportunity through fairness and transparency, to promote openness and tackle microaggressions, and foster belonging through unequivocal support for multivariate diversity. And they do this through investing millions of dollars in their trainings of their employees in being culturally competent and taking actions to strengthen both inclusion and diversity. And according to this report, companies in the top quartile for both gender and ethnic diversity are 12% more likely to outperform all other companies in that data set. So for example, Citigroup went from 8% gender diversity on their executive team in 2014 to over 30% in 2019 in just five years. Another example is Pentair, which is a water treatment company. And they said that their definition of diversity is "encompassing race, gender, ethnicity, country of origin, age, personal style, sexual orientation, physical ability, religion, and life experiences." It also translates into a stronger focus on company culture, creating a space where employees are enabled to leverage their unique strengths and work in ways that suit them best. Their executive VP and chief human resources officer said that inclusion and diversity is not just about setting targets and having women on the sleeve. "We're spending significant time on education, building business case for inclusion and diversity, and pointing out why it's not just about being politically correct." They are also working on developing a shared language on inclusion and diversity. The focus fits easily with what the company's existing commitment is and what it calls "win, right, culture, and values." The report states that it's just not about hiring diverse people, but it's about ensuring that they feel included, that there's a sense of belonging, and that's where the training comes in. So we could even go back to what we heard from the 2016 Region 15 graduates who said that they entered a diverse world that they were not prepared for. And we owe it to all the students to prepare them for the world that they enter, Region 15 and the community. And so diversity is a fact. I showed you at the beginning of this presentation, the demographics for the region, and it's changing, it's becoming more diverse. Equity is a choice that we can make, and making sure that we are taking action and being inclusive and welcoming, as our theory of action states. And when we do this, the outcome is, will be that students and staff and the community members feel that they belong. And so in closing, so I shared this slide with you way back when, when I first presented to you about global citizenship at the time, and now equity and inclusion. And I loved this slide by John Cotter, who's written a few books about the Eight Steps to Successful Change. And I think that this is a great visual because these are the steps that we've gone through. We created that sense of urgency by showing that there were incidences that were happening in Region 15 across the state and across the world, and how our demographics are changing. We created that guiding coalition, that group that said they want to work on this, that this is important. We developed a clear, shared vision with goals and with action steps and with timelines, and we created, communicated that vision to as many people that would listen to us. We empowered people to act on the vision, and so we included them in the three goals, whether it's Region 15 students, staff, or community members. We created short-term wins, and I showed you a list of some of the things that just happened this year. And so we're working on consolidating and building on those gains and institutionalizing this change to make it part of what we are and who we are. And so I end this evening's presentation with pictures of some of the Equity and Inclusion Council members. There's about half of them here on the screen, we have 60 in total. And with a famous quote by Margaret Mead that says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." And so I just wanted to say thank you to the students, to the teachers, to the administrators, and the community members who are on this committee. The work that they've done this year, especially in the middle of a global pandemic, is absolutely amazing, and I want to thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chiapetta. I know you've been doing this report annually now for a few years. I always look forward to hearing from you. Your enthusiasm is just contagious, so thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Chiapetta?
Marion, I have something to say.
Sure, Richard, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to thank Carrie for this very informative and comprehensive report. It's eye-opening, if you want to call it that, and it's comprehensive, and it's all-encompassing. And I think she did an outstanding job, and when our students get out in the real world, they understand what's going on in the real world, not in an isolated situation. Again, Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sharon Attic.
You hear me? Okay, great. So yes, Carrie, thank you so much for such a thorough presentation, and I very much support the initiative and the work that you and the entire team are doing. And I very much support the initiative and the work that you and the entire team are doing. I did have a question a little bit about what type of resources and support are provided to the teacher and residents that are perhaps outside of the Region 15, knowing that this is a really innovative program. Clearly, you seem to be a little bit ahead of the curve in your plan, and you showed that from a timeline perspective. And I guess where I'm going with this is the content and some of the theories and some of the activities are of a very, they need to, of a sense of nature, right? And they need to be communicated very carefully and also very age appropriately, right? When you think about, um, just the range of our students from kindergarten to high school. So how is the curriculum and the content of what the teacher and residents is sharing with our children kind of benchmarked for appropriateness and just keeping that, what I would say, that sensitivity in mind from an exposure of content perspective? Because I would imagine that that's a, that's a careful craft. And so I'm just wondering what type of guidance or benchmarking or resources this teacher and residents has to ensure that we are exposing children to these ideas and concepts at the right age, at the right time, and in the right way.
So, so thank you for that question. So, um, first, I just want to make clear that she does not have a curriculum. So, um, the work that's done fits into the Region 15 curriculum. And part of, um, part of her task and part of her job is to make sure that the Region 15 curriculum reflects various perspectives. And so that was all in the, the, um, the job posting that I shared, all those different bullets. So, and, um, I do have to say that Dr. Burden is probably one of the best researched person that I've, I've ever met. She, she, uh, applies to be part of every single professional development opportunity that, um, that comes by that is about equity and inclusion. She actually is part of the anti-bias educators group at CREC. And there they meet almost monthly, I would say, to learn about how to deliver this information. And so it's her, along with superintendents, assistant superintendents, curriculum directors across the country. In addition to that, um, there's been a lot of, this is a hot topic, so there's been a lot of professional development on it. And I do think a lot of the times we say that, how do we make sure that things are age appropriate? But I think lots of times we say age appropriate because we as adults are a little bit nervous about having that conversation. And so, um, she does have, um, lots of research and references to say that we do have to start having these conversations at our early age and early ages elementary school because we do have students who feel like they don't belong for whatever reason, whether it's race, religion, sexual orientation, appearance, socioeconomic, ability, et cetera. So, um, she, we do have a lot of research that says how that should be addressed. And, and we go by that. In addition to that, we've been working with different organizations. So we do that through CES. So that's the Cooperative Education Group down in Fairfield County. So we work with them. We work with, at Advance. We work with the different regional education groups in the state of Connecticut. And so she's attended various workshops with them. And when I say workshops, they're not just a one and done. It's all multiple days that, that she does that. In addition to the 657 activities that she's been doing with staff. So she really does live and breathe this, um, this work. And, um, everything that we do is based in research. It's not just something that we just randomly go do or randomly put together, but it's, it's looking at, what does Glessin, you know, for LGBTQ, what do they suggest? What do, um, uh, different groups for race and religion suggest? All based in research.
Right. Any, anyone else? All right. I think, uh, we will continue on with our meeting. Thank you so much, Dr. Chiapetta, for your presentation. And I look forward to getting another one next year. Thank you for all the great work that you're doing for our region and along with everyone else that's helping.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the April 7th, 2021 regular meeting minutes?
Board of Education approved the minutes of the April 7th, 2021 regular meeting.
Do I have a second? Heather Rogers, seconds? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? All right, all set. Next, we have information and proposals. Board committee reports. Finance and Facilities, Mr. John Cookson.
The Finance and Facilities Committee met on April 21st to review the March financial report, which Mr. Martino presented. We are monitoring spending closely due to the COVID-19 expenses as the will be a large area of focus this year. Received an update on the MES parking lot design, which is part of the transfer on tonight's agenda. Mr. Martino and Mr. Smith presented a breakdown of our parking lot fees, which we will be, which we will present. Okay, and one of the reports that we will give. Lastly, we received an update on the money that we sent back to the towns. Our next meeting has been changed from this Wednesday to next Monday. I believe that is the 17th.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have policy and curriculum, Mr. Steve Siriani.
Thank you, Madam Chair. PNC Tonight finished the 9,000 series. So, um, at its meeting, the preceded the Board of Ed meeting. So, uh, right now, on the current agenda, you will see policies for first presentation. Uh, and then next, uh, that our next meeting, you will see the last set of policies that will be, uh, on the agenda for first presentation. And then PNC has two meetings left. One of those meetings will have, uh, Mr. Jeremy Nelson giving a report on CTE. And then after, and then another one of those meetings will be our place giving a report on the humanities. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have PTO Advisory, Ms. Heather Dwyer.
Thank you. PTO Advisory met on March 6th. That was the day after referendum day. I was asked to pass along a hearty thank you to all the board members for all our time and effort put into the board budget meetings through March and early April. We also discussed Grad Night, which is a structured chaperone event put on for PHS students on their graduation day. So they have a fun, social, and safe way to celebrate their achievement. This year, due to the pandemic, Grad Night will be held outdoors at Quasi. This has added some expense to the event. And there are still funds to be raised and volunteers needed. So the council discussed getting the word out for donations. If anyone listening would like to learn more or to volunteer, check out PHS Grad Night. That's N-I-T-E dot com. We also discussed with Mr. Smith pending legislation and the expected vaccine eligibility for students 12 and up. And I just wanted to editorialize a little bit and just acknowledge that the PTO Advisory is a group of people who do so much to spread awareness of referendum day. And not just to parents of public school children, but through the whole community. They distributed flyers. They funded and set up signs in town, and they stood out in the rain with signs reminding people to vote today. And I just think that level of dedication and community service is admirable. And I would like to return the thank you for all their efforts. PTO Advisory will meet again in person on June 3rd. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have a SMART update, Mrs. Heather Rogers.
I just want to thank everyone for the May is for Manners success. Thank you to the region for their collaboration and the Guidance Department for their help, and also to Dr. Chiapetta for her help as well with that. Grad Night, SMART is going to commit to donating $1,000 to, towards Grad Night. Also, look out for Parents Who Host Lose the Most campaign to coincide with the end of the school year and graduation. And we also have a new billboard on Mental Health Focus on Main Street South and Southbury. So as you're driving by, try to take a peek at that or waiting in traffic for pickup or drop off at PES. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Superintendent's Report, Mr. Joshua Smith.
I'll take one out so I can hear myself talk, sorry. I said I'll start with a couple of thank yous. One to Dr. Chiapetta and the Equity and Inclusion Group. I think their work is really on above and beyond what anybody expected it to be when it started. And that group's work and the, um, evidence that's coming out of that and the artifacts like that video tonight are really being recognized around the state. And Dr. Chiapetta didn't do any of this work to be recognized around the state. She did it to serve the community here. And the same goes for those folks that join that group. But it's nice when our work is seen as a standard across the state of Connecticut. So thank you for representing all of us proud and doing that work to help students here. I'd also like to thank the community, the PTO and all of the parents and community members that turned out to support the budget. The margin in both towns was substantial. And I think that the support that comes through a referendum really helps validate and define the work that everybody put into the building of a budget, the transparency and commitment we made to answering the questions that came in and the mandate to go forward and do the work that we said we were going to do. So thank you for everybody that supported and questioned all aspects of the budget. Collectively, that process is a, is an important one, and I hope everybody felt, felt heard through that process. When I made my, wrote my comments for tonight, I said that we expected the vaccination be available to students starting at age 12 later this week. That actually has happened while our meeting started, and the FDA had made that approval, approval tonight. And although I haven't actually read anything other than the headlines of the Twitter and news feeds that came across my phone, it looks like that happened today. So the clinic that we have set for Friday is definite. We were pretty confident when we made the link available today. I can also tell you that that link filled up in two and a half hours. And the 360 or 380 sessions that we had, our vaccination appointments we had are now completely filled. The good news is that lots of communities around us will also have access to vaccines and create their own clinics. We definitely know that the Torrington Health Department and the Milford Health Department will both hold clinics that we will be able to get, uh, access to. So if a family didn't get in today, there will be opportunities for you to get appointments. The ESER 3, or the American Recovery Program, details have started to emerge. Mr. Martino and I were in a conference call this morning. We began meeting to review the planning for next year and review our plans that we put in place for this school year. I think that for the most part, the plan that we created for this school year has been very effective and that that is really kind of the high watermark that it will be a less restrictive reopening plan next year. So we have from now until probably mid-July to refine our planning for next year. And that will evolve based on everything that's happening around us. A reminder, just as we go through the end of this year, that even as the state begins to reopen, and this is going to be the challenge for school districts across the state, that our standards remain higher than that of the general population. And so our end-of-year activities, our schools, are still going to have more restrictive mitigation protocols in place than most of the state. And so while families feel kind of the emergence from the pandemic outside of our schools, a lot of our year-end structures are still going to be informed by those more stringent mitigation strategies. So I would just ask people to be conscious of that and, and to work with their schools, even if there is maybe some frustration that builds because we're, we have more restrictions here than you might have outside. And other than that, I think that, um, we're geared up for a nice end to the school year. And I just want to thank everybody for your support and the work that's happened to the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, we have board member comments. I'd also like to echo the comments of Heather Dwyer and thank everyone who helped get the school budget passed. We really appreciate it. Last year was not fun, not having a referendum and the board having to do this vote ourselves. So it was very nice to hear the voice of the people this year. And we really appreciate the support. And special thanks to, you know, PTO Advisory and the PTOs who helped get the budget vote out as well as other volunteers. And a particular shout out to those that even got people out to vote wearing a squid hat. You know who you are. Next, we have comments from citizens. Let's see.
There is one caller.
Okay.
Caller number 1650. You can unmute yourself to talk.
So there's a caller on. You have to press star six to unmute yourself, and then you could talk. And I forgot to add this, but the Board of Education will recognize citizens of Middlebury and Southbury. And citizens are asked to state their name, their town of residence, and to limit their comments to three minutes. So the caller who's on can go ahead with your public comment.
Hello. My name is Robin Wright. My son is a seventh grader at MMS. First of all, we'd like to thank you all and to show appreciation for all that this school has done and the region has done to support him because we know this has not been an easy year for anyone. He did remote learning for most of the year, but went back to school in March. It would have been nice for the district to reach out a little bit more to the voluntary remote parents to get an assessment or a survey like they did last year on what kids needed to be more successful. I know some surrounding school districts had implemented a remote liaison or peer tutors were set up because my A student pretty much shut down and was really not engaged. And I tried very hard to get help, but there really was, excuse me, wasn't any. Back in now and catching up. And I just had a couple of observations that obviously digital devices are, you know, the way of the future. This is where we're heading. But I thought that I had some feedback on the way that it actually is working. I mean, I know that we have a lot of parents on the board, so I'm sure you're familiar with it too. But it would seem that digital textbooks would be very helpful. There isn't one place that kids can go to to reference the material they're learning. It's spread out over all these different links, which becomes very hard to keep track of. Like my kid would end up having, you know, 10 to 15 tabs open. And every time they leave a page, they lose focus. Also, many of the teachers are using YouTube as an aid. And I can understand why this has been very helpful during the pandemic, but it doesn't seem the most beneficial way to teach. So while there's a lot of good content on YouTube, teachers have been able to manage previously without it. My thought is if it is used, the content should be copied to another location to reduce distraction. Because I need to know that when I see my kid on his Chromebook, that he's actually doing his homework and not looking at YouTube or having to watch ads on it. And once my son got back to school in person, he said that so many kids are just playing video games during class on their Chromebooks. This, I think, is unacceptable, and it's also not fair to make teachers police this. It would seem that there should be some stricter filters put on the devices so that this isn't even possible. The kids also get so many emails, dozens of emails a day, which is very overwhelming. And I think we're expecting too much for them to know how to manage all of this. It almost seems that we should be teaching them how to be organized with their technology. All of this can result in a lost interest in actually learning rather than fuss technology. It's our job to keep them in an environment where they can focus on learning. So I'd love to be able to speak to someone more for more than three minutes on this, but I just wanted to give some of my feedback. And I'm not sure if I should be going to policy and curriculum.
Yeah, you got, your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your call. You're definitely welcome to call or email Mr. Smith, and I'm sure he can guide you to the right person to talk to. Thank you. Are there any other public comments, Mr. Nelson? Any other people? I think that's it.
There are not at this time.
All right, thank you. Next, we have new business requiring board action. May I have a motion, a motion for approval? May I have a motion for approval of transfer entry for April?
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the signing, upon recommendation of the Finance Committee, approves transfer into the capital improvements for capital projects in the amount of $500,000 from health insurance for the Middlebury Elementary School parking lot.
I'll second. All right, that's Heather Rogers, who's second. John Cookson, who made the motion. Any discussion or questions on this motion? No, okay, we can put it to vote then. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Right, any nays? Any abstentions? Thank you, it passes unanimously. Next, may I have a motion for approval to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof replacement at the Mary I. Johnson Building Central Office?
John Cookson moved that the Board of Education resolved that the Pomperog Regional School District 15 authorizes the Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof replacement at the Mary I. Johnson Central Office.
Second. Heather Rogers is second. John Cookson made the motion. Joe, would you mind speaking to this really quick for the people who are not on finance?
Sure, this, evening, everyone. This allows us, permits us to go to the state of Connecticut for school construction dollars. Roofs and building modifications for a certain criteria are available. Your reimbursement rate is about 25% for central office projects. For schoolwork, it's 48%. So the roof is approximately $200,000 based on our, at least our last estimates. I'll have to get some new ones because pricing has changed significantly. So about $50,000 worth of reimbursement from the state for construction dollars. This begins the process as we go down the journey of a building committee. It's all formally dictated by the state of Connecticut.
Thank you. Any question or discussion? Yep, go ahead, Steve.
So it, the motion wasn't upon the recommendation of finance, but I'm gathering it was discussed in finance. You mentioned it, okay. And then and maybe this is a reading ahead because there's a building committee. So I could, you know, I can ask the question we get to that motion about. And I understand that may be part of the process because I normally don't remember. And I think we've replaced roofs before and not had a committee involved. But also, I understand that if the roof needs to be replaced, it needs to be replaced. And even if we were to magically be able to, you know, discharge or get, you know, transfer ownership of that building to some other party, we'd have to do it with, you know, a new roof. But I was just wondering, maybe at some point, like, is there, are we going to have a discussion about the future of that building? Like, how long do we, do we keep it? Is there somewhere else to house central office or some other way to do it? Because the building is, you know, is mostly, you know, probably at least about 50% empty. So I'm just, I'm just wondering about the future of that building so that, you know, we don't incur other expenses going down, going down the pike. Because that could be more of a comment than a question because I know we have to replace the roof regardless of whatever happens to the building.
Josh, do you want me to address other? I can answer it a little bit. So I would say, just to clarify. So I'd say the building is not close to 50%.
Okay.
So we're pretty full as far as office space goes. And there's, with food services and special ed in that building, that there's a lot of space that's taken up there. We do have two conference rooms that are available. But as far as office space goes, there's really not any empty offices as it sits today. I would also say that we've explored a little bit of the cost implications of not having that building. And the reality is the rental of office space, even close to the amount of square footage there, would far exceed the $200,000 that it would cost to replace the roof. So I think Mr. Martino and I are trying to do that kind of cost benefit between repairs and maintenance versus selling the building and looking at something else. I think the biggest piece for me is reoccurring costs. And I don't, at this point, think it would be prudent to sign a long-term reoccurring lease for office space. And our schools right now are full enough where we don't have enough space where we could relocate the amount of office space in central office into one of our schools. And so, you know, a building that needs some repairs still doesn't create a monthly cost other than utilities. Where if we were to look at kind of leasing office space, I think we'd get into far more than rent each year. Then we would pay, even if you advertise the things like the roof over time and look at like annual maintenance costs for the building. It's far less than leasing office space.
Thank you.
Very, can I make a comment? The problem is, Steve, where do we go? Where do we go? The cost of moving that building is enormous. Okay, and then what we would have to do to it based on our new phone system and all of the other things that are in place would be a very, very expensive project in order to do it. And don't think we haven't looked in other areas to look for space. It's just not out there.
All right.
It's just not out there.
No, that's, those are all fine reasons to keep the building. I just, we haven't really discussed it. And as you know, problem's going down, or maybe come back up. But we, you know, I always like to just, let's just make sure we talk about the space that we're, that we keep and how we take care of it. So thank you.
We have looked for buildings elsewhere around in the area, but they just don't exist for the space we need and everything.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions or comments or discussion points? No, all right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any against, any nays? Any abstentions? All right, it's unanimous, thank you. Next, may I have a motion for approval of the Pomperog Regional School District 15 Building Committee?
What do we have? Move that the Board of Education resolved that the Pomperog Regional School District 15 Building Committee is hereby established as the Building Committee with regard to the roof replacement at the Mary I. Johnson Central Office.
All right, so we have Heather Rogers, second. Joe, can you explain this one a bit?
Yes, as per state guidelines, you're required to have a building committee for all state projects. So even though this is obviously kind of a small roofing project, it doesn't matter if you're doing a small roof or constructing a brand new high school, you need a building committee per state statute for reimbursement. So the Finance Committee members will serve as that committee. We'll probably have one or two very brief meetings, just go over the drawings. It's a pretty simple process for at least this, what we're going through with the roof. But yeah, this all, these three motions are required to begin the process for the application.
I just add to Steve's question before. Historically, as a district, when Mr. Martino and I look back, we have not applied for state reimbursement on our roofs. So they're smaller projects. And they take a little more legwork and hoop jumping to make sure all the pieces are in place. But whether it's 48% for a school building or 25% for a central office building, we feel that it's worth the effort to get any type of reimbursement in those projects.
And I would appreciate, I appreciate the going through this process and that the fact that you're doing that and that finance is doing that. I mean, it makes sense. We should, we should definitely do it.
Last, last state construction dollars that came in the district was when Long Meadow was built.
Yeah. We've, I'm sure we've had roofs since then, so that would be good, by all means.
All right, any other comments or discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? All right, it passes unanimously, thank you. Next, may I have a motion for approval of Pomperog Regional School District 15 to authorize the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof replacement at the Mary I. Johnson Central Office?
John Cookson moved that the Board of Education resolved that the Pomperog Regional School District 15 hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof replacement at the Mary I. Johnson Central Office.
Yep, Heather Rogers, second, thank you. I think Joe kind of explained this before. Any other questions?
This lets me go get an architect and draw a big picture on really wide plans.
Any questions, comments, discussion? No? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? All right, it passes unanimously, thank you. Finally, may I have a motion for approval of the trust agreement between Webster Bank and Regional School District 15?
John Cookson moved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Pension Committee, approve the trust agreement between Webster Bank and Regional School District 15 as presented.
Second. Thank you, thank you, Heather. Any, yep, go ahead, Joe.
This allows us to transfer our current pension system into a trust account Webster Bank so we can begin to transition dollars in with the new pension company. This is kind of an intermediary account, which eventually will dissolve in time. The account and fees were bid out through our vendor. Webster Bank stepped up and actually were the lowest on the fee structure overall. Our shipment and Goodman already reviewed the contract. This is just obviously permission to actually open up the account.
All right, any other question or discussions? Yep, go ahead, Shannon.
I just want to make sure that it's not an issue that I'm a senior vice president at Webster Bank.
You can, you can abstain from voting. You can abstain from voting.
I just want to make sure it doesn't create a conflict of interest because usually I have to disclose and get information from legal if anything I'm doing on a volunteer basis. Does any business with Webster Bank?
Abstain.
You can, you can, you can abstain from voting. So, I mean, I think that from a school district standpoint, you didn't have anything to do with the bid process. But you can certainly abstain if there's any concern, makes it cleaner.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Shannon Cavalo, thank you for the abstention. It passes, thank you, everyone. Announcement of future meetings. I think we heard Mr. Cookson say earlier that the finance and facilities is on Monday, May 17th at the, at central office, okay. And our next policy and curriculum meeting is Monday, May 24th at the High School Media Center, followed by a regular Board of Ed meeting, also at the High School Media Center at 7:30 where Mr. Smith will be doing his year-end reflection. Then we have Monday, June 14th, PNC is meeting at the High School Media Center at 6:30. And then Monday, June 14th, will also be a regular board meeting at the High School Media Center at 7:30. And
It's canceled. The 28th, sorry.
Okay, yep, the, the June 14th meeting is not canceled.
Right, sorry.
But the Monday, June 28th, PNC committee meeting is canceled. And I'm not ready to cancel it now, but most likely the Monday, June 28th, regular meeting will be canceled. But we'll announce it next meeting after I talk to Superintendent Smith about it a little bit more to make sure that that's what we want. May I have a motion for executive session with possible action?
I move that the Board of Education goes into executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's nominee for Pomperog Elementary School principal and to invite Superintendent Smith into executive session.
Thank you, do I have a second? Oh, I heard Heather Rogers, second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
We invited Superintendent Smith, and that's, that's all we're inviting, yep. Yep, any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are going to move into executive session.
Everybody.
And we will be back.